Order on this 10th day of December 2020, please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Be seated. All right, Sandy, would you please call the roll?
Certainly Supervisor Schneiderman.
I am here.
Councilwoman Lobstad.
Here.
Councilman Martel.
Here.
Councilman Bouvier.
Here.
Councilman Skivon.
Here.
All right, thank you all for joining us via Zoom. I wish we could all be together, but with the increasing COVID numbers, we're trying to be cautious and protect each other and others. And we seem to be able to conduct town business this way under the executive order from Governor Cuomo. This is a permitted way for us to be together and we try to do our best to make it as viewable by town residents as well. So I thank CTV for that and for our IT department and our clerk's office. So we're going to start today with the main topic that's been on everybody's minds for the last nine or 10 months, which is the pandemic. And Ryan Murphy, our Director of Public Safety, is also our COVID Coordinator. And he's been staying abreast of all of the ever-changing guidelines and numbers. And as you know, I track the numbers as well, but I'm going to turn things over to Ryan to give us any updates on the COVID pandemic in the town of Southampton.
Thank you Supervisor. Yes, in terms of tracking numbers, a lot of people have, I'm sure, been paying attention to the case tracker that's provided on the county website, which typically gives the total numbers since the start of the pandemic. And sometimes we see the percentages, just to break that down so people don't have to really do the math on it for themselves. From November 18th to December 8th, we've had 420 new COVID positive cases within the town of Southampton. We've been tracking day by day how the increases occurred based on the information that comes out from the Suffolk County EOC on a daily, daily or every other day basis. So we've been staying on top of those numbers as best as possible. That, that increase and those numbers are not something that we didn't expect. We, we knew that post Thanksgiving, we probably see increases, you know, similar to Halloween. And the numbers really never went back down after Halloween. I mentioned this to everyone the last time we were together. So these numbers are not unexpected as per the state and Dr. Fauci, who was on a press conference with the governor the other day. We should probably expect to see the numbers continue to climb and perhaps topping out somewhere in, you know, the January time after the Christmas and Hanukkah and other holidays have occurred over the next several weeks. We want to continue to encourage people to try and minimize, you know, gatherings as much as possible, despite how it'd be upsetting not to be able to get together with, you know, family and loved ones. We just, we just know by the statistics at this point that when, when people gather, the, the capability for COVID to spread greatly enhances. We've seen it and the majority of cases and the majority of contact tracing that has occurred indicates that a lot of the spread is occurring in small group gathering. It's, you know, it's not really tracking back to, to large gatherings. It's not tracking back so much to, to school settings. It's tracking back to small gatherings. A family member that's not normally around the house comes in and visits for the holiday. And, you know, next thing you know, a couple of days later, a phone call that they tested positive. And now we have, you know, four, five, six people that are potentially impacted by that. That's four, five, six people that have to potentially precautionarily quarantine, taking them out of the workforce, impacting the flow of their daily lives. If there's children involved, that could impact entire classrooms at school. So it's, it's very easy when you start to look at it like that to see the cascading effects of, of these small gatherings and how, you know, one person inserting themselves into a household situation that they're not normally part of, and then coming up positive can impact an exponentially great number of other people. So as much as it upsets folks, we want to continue to encourage not having gatherings as much as you can. Continue to wear the face coverings, continue to try and maintain social distancing as best as possible. That, that's the general message out there and that's our, our trend with the numbers right now.
Can I share a little bit on numbers too? So the growth rate in Southampton town as a whole over the past, say, past month is pretty much in line with the rest of Suffolk County. That's not necessarily good or bad. There are areas that are growing slightly faster. East Hampton grew a little bit faster than Southampton is areas that grew a little slower. So we, you know, the number of cases in the last month have gone up by 40%. The total, total number for Southampton, East Hampton went up by 64%. Other areas, 26% in Babylon, though they are, they're seeing a more recent increase. On a more drilled down basis. Well, I, you know, before I do the more drill down, I should say, like, so yesterday, the number of cases townwide in Southampton were 21. You know, for a while we were running zero, one or two, so that's not good. But there's been times that it's been higher than that. We obviously want to see these numbers continue to decline. You know, on a handle it by handle it, it's, it's tougher. For instance, the yesterday, which is really the numbers the day before Hampton Bays did have the highest with seven, Flanders with six. Riverside had three, a lot of the areas, you know, had no new cases. But that, you know, that yellow zone, sort of that goes, you know, Hampton Bays, Genoa Cock Hills, a little bit of East Quag and up by Riverside, Flanders, that had seen higher numbers than the rest of the town in general. And that's why it got designated at a, at a yellow zone, but it seems to be fairly, fairly stable. Over the last, yeah.
It's, it's actually, I mean, we're happy to report to the public that the percent positive is actually gone down since the initial yellow zone designation. And we have to look at all the factors here too. We may see more positives in those areas right now as well than other places because we're doing more testing in those areas too. So it's not to say that the problem doesn't exist elsewhere. It's just that the availability of testing happens to be elevated due to the Red Creek Testing Site, the one at the county center, and the new one PBMC has opened up across from the hospital up in Riverhead.
Right. You know, and the growth rate in those, you know, even those higher communities are pretty much on average with the county's growth rate. So they're not, you know, they're not out of line per se. We want to see it, it, it lower, we want to see it disappear. But, you know, the numbers, you know, really throughout the county in Western Suffolk, once, you know, for a while, let's shift to Western Suffolk, the five western towns, the growth rate is faster than the five east end towns. Sometimes, some days, there's, it's twice as much. So I always expect the five east end towns to have about 10% of the cases. So if there's 100 cases, we have 10 and they have 90, whatever. But, you know, we're seeing about half of what I would expect, which means that they're still growing faster than us. It's, it's not always that way. There's been a couple of weeks where we were growing faster. But at the moment, we're, we're back to, I think, Western Suffolk growing faster than Eastern Suffolk. But Ryan, I'll go back.
And for anybody that looks at the case tracker too, we pointed this out the other day. It's worth noting that if they look at the number per thousand people, the, the case tracker is using US Census data. And we, we also do know that we have a greatly elevated population out here right now compared to the data that it's running against. So those numbers might be slightly skewed in terms of the, the number per thousand. It, it's basing it on probably about a 50,000 person number when we know that our population's significantly more than that right now.
Yeah, and it doesn't necessarily mean we're doing a better job out on the east end. It's really, as you have higher concentrations of population, the, the incident rate goes up just by virtue of, you know, more interactions. So you come out to the east end, not only do we have a lesser base number, but they tend to be more spread out and less opportunities for interaction. So, but everybody, you know, I'm working very closely with all the supervisors of Suffolk County, in particular with the east end supervisors and mayors. And we're all comparing notes and trying to share resources. And it's, Ryan's been attending the east end supervisors and mayors meetings. And he always does a bit of an update at those meetings. And I think they've been very, very helpful.
We, we've also, and we updated the supervisors and mayors last meeting. We've also enhanced some of our capabilities for cleaning and sanitizing town facilities. We've, we've got quite a nice, you know, arsenal of tools to be able to use against, you know, COVID and to try and combat spread within our own facilities. At this point, we're utilizing, as of just the start of this week, because we acquired a, some new device, an electrostatic sprayer and a sanitizing solution now. We've already been using UVC lighting and the hydroxyl ionization technology to try and, you know, clean the air and surfaces throughout the town. So we, we've got a rather comprehensive and professional way of cleaning our spaces that we are using on a regular basis in, in our town facilities.
Ryan, are you keeping track of our COVID related expenses?
I see, I see lens on the Zoom meeting now.
We know the monetary impact besides all the revenue losses. But in terms of the costs we've incurred in handling the pandemic?
Yeah, we have a separate course, Jay. As you know, the board established it back in February. And we've been tracking it and Ryan usually comes to me before he buys anything and we discuss it. And we figure out what would be prudent as opposed to just randomly spending money. A lot of the things that were reimbursable early on in the event are no longer reimbursable too. So, you know, this disaster has gone from one stage to another, just like time off for the employees and stuff like that, in the initial stages. You know, there was 10 days off and now, you know, we're, we're, we're dealing with a lot of moving parts under our feet with regard to payroll, time off, work at home, expenses, a lot.
Yeah, it's really, it's really hard to add up the actual costs, the overtime costs, the loss of productivity perhaps from people working at home or having to shut down workplaces. We, do you, Len, do you have a sense? I mean, is it a million dollar number? Is it a half a million dollar number?
No, no, no. Direct expenses other than, if you would talk about overtime and stuff like that, we're like in the hundred to $200,000 range.
Direct.
We, yeah, when it comes to the tangibles, I can say we've, we've done, I think we've done a fantastic job in the town of Southampton to keep our cost for equipment to deal with COVID, whether it's the, the lighting, the ionizers, the sanitizing. We've really tried to keep that down as best as possible. And even in terms of, you know, the strategies we're using with employees for like attestation forms and, and monitoring and stuff like that. You know, we've looked at a couple of different solutions out there that would probably cost the town somewhere between 150 and $200,000 a year. And we've managed to come up with in-house solutions that are costing us, you know, next to nothing, other than some, you know, development hours that went into some of those solutions. So.
What about revenue?
We're doing fantastic, keeping those numbers.
And, and Jay, as you know, we've developed in-house, you know, electronic solutions, whether or not it's appointment making, figuring out ways to get people through town hall, figuring out Zoom meetings. We've done tremendous amounts, given that we have the expertise, IT expertise, probably better than any town. So we have been able to address a lot of these things electronically. And we're pretty well suited to get into a, a work at home environment where, where possible for those people that they can be pretty productive. I, I'm not going to say anybody's 100% productive, but I could tell you, things become very productive and the, the workday doesn't stop at four o'clock because you're in front of your computer. So you wind up continuing to work. So.
Len, do you have a sense of revenue losses that are directly related? I know, I know we lost a million and a half in county funding for our police. We hope we get that back, but in terms of things like building permit revenues and other.
Yeah, no, you're, that's correct. Our building permit revenues are down. That's, we did see a significant drop in that. But, you know, the, on the flip side, we've seen a significant increase in mortgage tax revenue. So, which is a different fund, but up a lot of our shortfalls with, with other types of revenues. So I don't think that the, if you were looking at 30,000 feet level, the town's budget is pretty much where we projected it in the budget, which, which had us actually with some surpluses. So I think we've managed this as well as anybody. And due to our strong financial position, it's allowed us to, 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 to handle and weather these storms. That's, that's why we, we have what we have.
And Len, how does the, how has the revenue from the justice court been affected by, by the pandemic? Not that we, but it is a dollars and cents consideration.
No, that, you're right. That, that is probably one of our biggest areas that, in the general fund, because that's where that reports to, that has seen a big decline. You know, when they were closed, there was hardly any revenue coming in. In addition, there's, you know, the court isn't able to operate at, you know, efficiency. And then the, the third part is the people that are even fine or are not paying. So, you know, we have a threefold problem with collections in the justice court. And, you know, we've attempted to do certain changes, but we, you know, we're, we're having difficulty implementing some electronic changes too. So that's something that I think the supervisor and I and the board will have to address in the future. Right at the beginning of the new year, we, we need to look at some alternatives that I've put on the table that need to be implemented.
Okay, thank you.
Any other COVID questions and then we'll move on to some of the beach roads? All right, so let's, let's.
Oh, just one COVID. Even though we did stop the, the beach, I see Kristin's out there. Even though we did limit the beach access and we had minimal, you know, we, we were restricting people. And when you look at our beach revenues, since we were open and a lot of, we actually let our beaches open to non-residents earlier and longer, our overall revenues in the beach, beach area, which is an enterprise fund, exceeded our estimates. So we did very well there. So I, I'd have to say that in that, in terms of that, we weren't hurt at all.
Interesting. And I think some of those changes in non-resident passes, you know, the renter, renters passes drove people to get their houses registered into the rental permit program. And so I see Ryan nodding, but I think we went up quite a bit there.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
Yeah. I can mark them.
What was that, Ryan?
Yeah, we, we definitely saw an increase and, and, and it, which is good on the, the, you know, revenue stabilization side. Really first and foremost, from the legalization of the rentals and, and us being able to go in and do the necessary safety checks on those, those facilities for the renters to be able to come in and feel confident about where they're staying.
Right. Yeah, that's, that's interesting. At some point, I think we need to talk about whether those who rent in Southampton should pay the same price as somebody who is living in East Hampton, you know, that non-resident price. But we can talk about that. But this year we limited the non-resident to people who actually had a lease here, which is a, and I think that at some point we changed that, but that was a, I think that's what drove the people to get their houses registered. All right, I see that we're moving on here because this, this screen up. So I'll take the cue that we're going to talk about. Beach road regulations.
You got the hook.
I know. So, all right, so I don't know, Rick Martel, you've been working on this. You want to, you want to introduce?
Yeah, I'll do a quick introduction. If you remember back to the spring and the beginning of the pandemic, we had a tremendous influx of visitors from the tri-state area who had used out beaches. Unfortunately, that came with concerns about safety, health concerns, and just quality of life issues to the people who lived around the road ends. It became so bad that Jay, you had to continuously have some emergency orders to limit parking so that it would limit the amount of crowds we had at those beaches. We then put together a committee, myself and Councilwoman Lobstad, Tom Neely, our Public Transportation and Safety Director, Kristen Dulose, the trustees, the Bay Constables, and Captain Kiernan, as long as, as well as community input. And we formulated a plan. There's seven roads that we particularly picked out of our 126 road ends that we needed to put attention on and to draft some new regulations. So Julie, if you wanted to add anything to that?
Sure. So as Rick said, we, we had a nice group working on this. I think it reflected all of the departments that needed to have an input. Tom Neely, of course, thanks Tom for wrangling us during every meeting. Parks Department, PD, Bay Constables, the trustees, and the town attorney's office. And it may not be perfect, but I think with all the different needs of the different departments, we came to a good compromise that should solve the biggest problems at the biggest problem areas. And so Jay doesn't have to do those orders every three days.
So what you're proposing will be permanent code changes and they'll stay in effect after the pandemic as well?
Correct. And it could be the beginning of other road ends. You know, it's a trial to see if these actually work for what we plan on. We, you know, we need to limit the amount of people in these residential areas using our beaches while still keeping some spots for visitors to come for free. So I think it's a good compromise at this point.
No, and I appreciate the work you guys have put in and drilling down on these roads. Obviously through the executive order or the emergency order, I sort of had to treat all the road ends the same. I didn't have time to figure out, you know. I think that's Tom Neely there. This, this process, this process really needed to occur. So who is going to talk us through, I guess, Tom Neely? The, what, the two council, Councilwoman Lobstad and Councilman Martel have, are proposing here? All right, and Kristen Dulose.
I will, I will walk you through it. I'm sorry, you're not getting the video connection, but we do have the audio connection. So I will walk you through the PowerPoint.
Do you have two open lines, Tom? I think you do, because I'm getting like a feedback loop or an echo.
You're up here. Your name's up twice up on this thing too.
Yeah, that is the problem. The problem is, is I don't know which is which and I don't want to pull them out on one and be the wrong one. Are you talking on your phone?
Does that help at all?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, let me, let me try to talk softly, which is not my specialty. But I will try to take it through it.
Start your video.
Video on.
The, this is a recap, as everyone said, of our previous discussions. We are, just to recap where we started this. This is a follow-up to the previous town board work sessions that we had. We were to review the beach and water access vehicle and traffic regulations and focus on key identified roads, parking by permit and seasonal no parking. At our prior meetings, we evaluated, talked about short and long-term issues and solutions, balance a variety of considerations, trying to find universal approaches where possible.
Tom, you need to share your screen.
Pardon me?
You need to share your screen.
I thought I was sharing my screen.
You were a little while ago, but now you need to try it again.
There you are.
You're not seeing the screen?
No.
No, no, we just, we just started seeing you.
We can see you, but share your screen. Hit the green button down below. The share screen button. I know you could do it.
Can you see?
Thank you. Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. So we went through this, we had to coordinate. This is a recap, so let me go to the next one. We have reached consensus, our task force has reached consensus on these items. We should add or modify parking by permit and seasonal no parking regulations on eight roads. And also as part of that, modify no parking regulations on two of these roads. It's recommended that the effective days of both parking by permit and seasonal no parking be increased on these roads. And we are suggesting April 1st to September 30th. We also, again, as part of our earlier discussions, we made sure to either maintain or create some unregulated parking areas within these regulated roads to accommodate visitors who may not be able to get a parking by permit, a permit to park. And we'd also recommend that we put in the seasonal no parking regulations that unless we are otherwise specified in the regulations, roads will have a 50-foot seasonal no parking restriction enacted at the road ends. So we're kind of defaulting to that, if you will. And within that 50-foot seasonal no parking zone, handicap parking may be established in this area and within that zone. And we recommend that the board move forward with this, either through formal public hearings or other means of few so choose. Now we're going to look at the individual roads. Hampton Bays, West Landing Road. Parking by permit is proposed for 200 feet on the, let me catch up with myself here. Proposed for 200 feet in the southerly direction, following the 50-foot road end, followed by 300 feet of seasonal no parking. So that's the west side of the road. The yellow area on the west side of the road would be parking by permit and then 300 feet of seasonal no parking. On the east side of the road, we'd revise the current seasonal no parking regulations, which go from Newtown Road up to the road end. We would end that at Petrel, which is the road that intersects West Landing. And between Petrel and the road end, we would put in parking by permit. On Petrel, which currently has no regulations on it at all, on the south side of the road, we'd have seasonal no parking. So that's the side that the homes are on, would have seasonal no parking for 400 feet. And on the north side of the road, we would have 275 feet of parking by permit. So I would suggest, unless you have a particular question, we run through all of them and then let me know if you have a particular question, we could address it now, or we'll go to East Landing Road. Okay. East Landing Road. Parking by permit is proposed beginning on beginning 50 feet from the road end in the southerly direction for 550 feet. So again, we are putting the parking by permit on the side opposite where the homes are. And on the east side, there is existing seasonal no parking, and we don't propose any change to that, other than the change if the season were to be extended, but there's no change to this particular regulation. Going to the next Sunset Avenue, Hampton Bays.
Tom, when you say, Tom, when you say seasonal no parking, what do you mean by that exactly?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
When you say seasonal no parking, what is, that means that it's parking by town residents only during the season? Is that what that is, or?
Seasonal no parking is, no, currently, no parking at all for anybody.
Anybody.
May 15th to September 15th, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, unless it's otherwise specified for a particular road to be different than that. But seasonal no parking is basically no parking from May 15th to September 15th.
So outside of the season, you can park there, but during the season, nobody can park there?
I'm sorry, repeat that?
So anybody can park there off-season? But during the season, no one can park there?
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct. So that's in effect on the west side of the road. We don't have any changes on the west side of the road proposed. The east side of the road currently has parking by permit, and it also has seasonal no parking overnight. There are a couple of issues with this. The residents, we understand that there have been a lot of concerns about people coming and basically being there all night or late into the evening. One of the major issues I found with this with regard to the emergency order is that the no overnight parking is not posted. So we had the regulation on the books, but the signs were never posted. So if we simply posted the existing signs, we'd keep people from parking there overnight. In addition to that, what we discussed as a group is possibly, if the board wanted to, extend those no overnight parking regulations to start earlier in the evening. This, I believe, is probably something we'd want to get community feedback on, but I think the the major issue here, I believe, was that the existing regulations were not posted. So signage on both sides of the street needs to be corrected. We'll go to the next one. So we are on Cold Springs Road. Cold Springs Road, on the west side of the road, there's currently 600 feet of seasonal no parking, followed by 500 feet of parking by permit. So that's what's on the books now. What we are recommending on the west side of the road is to essentially carve out a 200-foot section of unregulated parking for people to be able to legally, that don't have a permit, would be able to park there. So we basically shorten the seasonal no parking a little bit, coming from the water from the beach, and we take a little bit off of the parking by permit on the other end to create a 200-foot unregulated area for people to park. On the east side of the road, again, there are existing parking by permit regulations. We're not really changing that, we're shortening the no parking at the end of the road from 100 feet to 50 feet, to be consistent with what we spoke about earlier. But we're not proposing any other change on the east side of the road. So it's essentially carving out a 200-foot unregulated parking area for people to park. And again, I would like to point out, and as it is on the map, the regulations are posted, are not posted correctly on this road either. So correctly posting the regulations may also help solve some of the problems.
Is there parking further down that street? When you get to the end of the street, it makes a left? As it hits the water and the town owns the piece along the water there? Or it, yeah, it's off this map. Is there any further parking down the road here?
There.
Right.
Are you able to see that call map?
Yeah, I can see that. So that left turn there, if you're heading toward the water? We own that whole, it's a private road, I think, but we own the beach there. On the, along the water, that, that piece of property is a town-owned piece, so is that long rectangle is town-owned? So we own basically a piece along the beach on the left side of the road and, and that rectangle on the right side of the road. But are there any, is there any additional parking in there? To use, utilize that beach? Or is it no parking on that road? The road makes the left?
Right by the beach, as I remember, there is a no parking sign on the east side. And on the west side, there are no parking signs where that purple line is. Again, it's not really posted correctly, but it's posted no parking right by the beach.
And what about that other road, though, the one that runs parallel to the beach?
That other, that other road does, is posted no parking. In that community, it is posted no parking in there.
Alright, because that beach was part of that Sabonic PDD, and it was given to the town for recreational use. But if people can't get to it, I don't know how they use it. But anyway. But, so where is the, so there is some parking that we're allowing in this area, right?
On Cold Spring, and I did not look at that small road, Jay. I did not look at that. I believe that whatever the legal designation for that is, it's not in our vehicle and traffic code, and I don't think it's an official town road.
It's not, it's a private road, I believe.
So I did not look at that.
Alright, but where, where can people park here?
Right now, they can park anywhere you see the yellow lines.
Okay.
It needs, the parking signage needs to be corrected, but you can basically park anywhere you see the yellow lines, you cannot park in season where you see the purple lines.
Okay.
So we're just gonna, we're gonna post it correctly and carve out a 200-foot space of unregulated parking. Currently, there is, there's really no signage from this bend south. So all the signage is basically at this bend between the bend and the ocean and the water. There's no signage here, so it appears to be totally unregulated, but that's not correct.
Okay.
Okay. North Sea Road. There are no regulations existing on this road currently. We are recommending seasonal no parking on the east side where the homes are, and parking by permit on the west side. And down at the end of the parking by permit area would be unregulated for people, you know, to be able to park there and walk to the beach. Sabonic Inlet. There, again, there are no regulations down there right now. What we are suggesting is some parking by permit on both sides of the road up near the water, followed on the west side by seasonal no parking. And on the east side, that would be year-round no parking, where you see the black and yellow hatching. I'm sure you've all been down there. That, basically, you can drive right onto the beach in that area off to the right, and, you know, there is concern about degrading the road further, so year-round no parking as opposed to seasonal no parking was suggested by Christine Fettin when I reviewed this with her. So here, we'd make it year-round no parking. On the other side of the road, it would be seasonal no parking. And about 400 and some feet of parking by permit right up near the road end. The next is Town Point Road. Again, there is currently only a, I believe it's a 75-foot no parking zone on the west side of the road, right at the beach end. That's the only current regulation. So what we're proposing on the west side is seasonal no parking from, from that point up by the road end, all the way down to where the boat launch, boat ramp area is, so that would be seasonal no parking. On the other side of the road, up near the beach, and for a distance of 450 feet, we'd have parking by permit. Then we would have a 200-foot unrestricted zone, so people can, you know, park there without a permit. And then on both sides of the road, basically from the boat launch parking area there, down to the little bridge, we'd have no parking year-round on both sides of the road. When I reviewed that, that's an extremely tight area there. So I think a car parked on either side of the road, or a vehicle parked on either side of the road creates a real issue, so that's why we're recommending year-round no parking in that, in that stretch on both sides of the road.
That seasonal no parking area, currently, what's the situation there? Is that parking or no parking?
I'm sorry, repeat that?
The area that you're requesting seasonal no parking for, currently, what's the status of that area?
It's totally unregulated.
So you're going from totally unregulated to no parking during the season for anyone, is it? Because that's a pretty popular beach, are we losing a lot of parking spaces there? By doing this?
You know, being not totally unregulated, it, you know, I'm sure people have been parking there. Part of the considerations also, and I did speak, I did ask Marty Shea to look at Town Point Road and Sabonic Inlet Road, because as I'm sure you folks know, both these roads have substantial erosion and flooding issues. So I asked for Marty's opinion as to, you know, the impact of these regulations on, or lack of regulations, you know, on this area. You know, so, and I showed him these suggested regulations, he thought they were a good idea.
I'm concerned, I'm concerned because.
She was concerned about, again, road degradation with cars parking, basically where asphalt is meeting a sandy shoulder that's below the level of the grade. So, you know, so that impacted some of the considerations as well.
I have an issue potentially with access here, because it is a really wide beach and a popular beach, and you know, you're cutting the availability of parking for town residents basically in half by limiting, by eliminating the parking on the west side of the road there.
You know, that's certainly, I think, you know, a valid point. Up near the beach, it's very tight, there's some homes there, it's very tight, and then, you know, this area just north of the boat ramp area, boat launch area, is not quite as tight, but you are basically up against the sandy, rocky area. But yes, it certainly is more restrictive than it's been, that's for sure.
Yeah, again, it's a really wide beach, so it's, it can handle, I think, the people who've been using it. I would hate to, you know, eliminate the use for people. And it's mostly people from that area who use that beach, who live up in that area. That's, could be a problem, though, because you know, if all those spaces are full, they have no place to park anymore.
Perhaps we can, so there's the no parking on each side by that, the boat launch there. And I understand that the right side, which is the east side, because that's on the sandy shore, etc., but the left side, perhaps, maybe we can do something with that, because that is along a parking lot, and it even looks like there's another parking lot below the, the square one. I can't really see my map too well.
I mean, I think it would be okay if we did permit parking, you know, regulated parking, seasonal, you know, you have to be a town resident during the season. But to eliminate parking altogether there, I think, may end up making this beach a lot less available to town residents. That's just my, my gut there.
To your point, Jay, what would be allowed now between the parking by permit and the 200 feet of unrestricted parking? It's about 600 feet of, 650 feet. That's probably about 30 cars is all that would be able to park up there.
Yeah.
That, that may be too restrictive.
Alright, well, let's keep going through, we can always go take another look at some of this, these.
Well, fortunately, we're at the end. Just wanted to point out a couple of things, because those are the roads we focused on, so those, that's the last of the specific recommendations we have. I think we all are aware that there may be, there were other roads brought to our attention, and some other, some of those folks, you know, may want to come back and talk about those roads, but by consensus, these were the ones we thought were the most problematic.
Did you look at Town Line Road?
Pardon me?
Did you look at Town Line Road? There was a lot of controversy around Town Line Road when East Hampton stopped allowing South Hampton residents to park on the east side of the road?
We had some discussions with the village. I spoke to Brody Winchell a little bit, and I think she was talking to the mayor. Because the issue, we've always had seasonal no parking on, on the east side of that road under town regulation, South Hampton Town Regulation. The west side of the road, the, my understanding is that East Hampton Town Police would always allow people with South Hampton permits to park on the west side of the road, but they changed that policy and began issuing tickets.
Right.
I believe the mayor was in conversation with East Hampton about that in May or June, and never heard anything else, so I think it was, I think it was resolved.
What, what's this regulation on the west side, our side of the road? What, is it currently no parking seasonally, or can you park?
On Town Line Road?
Right.
I believe it is.
I think it's seasonal.
Seasonal no parking on our side of the road.
I, I think we need to make that parking by town resident permit over there.
There are some other issues of concern down in that area, namely, the people who have lived there have bushes, in one instance, a pipe and other things out onto the right-of-way, which physically makes it difficult for, for people to park. They would literally have to park on the pavement.
Right.
We certainly can take a look at that, parking by permit on the east side of the road, if it's not already.
West, west side of roads.
We can look at the east side. We have.
East side's not ours. East side is East Hampton's. The west side is ours.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I have it backwards. I'm sorry. The west side. But that also, at this point, those regulations were enacted when the village was not its own entity. It's now its own entity and those have carried over. So I believe. That the village may have to pass that ordinance. I'm not, I mean, we obviously have to work closely with them. But I'm not sure whether, whether we have the authority to.
We should look into that because I don't think the village, the creation of the village can suddenly block town residents from using a town road. So.
I, I did.
And if they can, we could be in trouble on Gibson and, you know, Daniels. You know, we, we have a lot of roads and beaches in the village of Sagaponic.
Those are both in IME with them.
I'm sorry.
Gibson, Gibson and Sag mean, road are in IME with the villages said Sagaponic. Town Line, I mean, there are a lot of driveways on the west side of Town Line Road. I don't know how feasible parking would be on that side. But, you know, we could look into it with the village, like Tom said, and see what we could do from the town side.
Yeah, I did talk to Brody about this and promised her that we would communicate after we had more of these discussions. So. Why don't we plan to do that? Talk about Town Line Road. Kristin, you and I and Sean, you know, maybe we can try to figure that out and talk to. The town clerk for Sagaponic, try to figure that out.
Okay.
Okay. So. The, as mentioned with a couple of the roads during this presentation. Number of the roads, the signs are not posted correctly. That needs to be addressed. That doesn't require new regulation. That does need to be addressed. We also have a number of roads that are not part of this discussion. But in looking at the roads, I found a number of roads where the signs are not posted in accordance with the town regulation. You see them here. And there, I said, there may be others. I can tell you there are others. We may need to address this in the future for the town board. For example, Doom Road. It's in our code as seasonal no parking. All the signs say no parking. And again, in talking to a few people, the sense I've received is that most people think maybe it should be year-round no parking. Which means we should probably change our code. Same thing with Canal Road East. It's posted as no parking. It's actually seasonal no parking in our code. So there's a few of these that I think we're going to have to clean up as we go forward. And. Working with Sean, we have drafted notices of public hearings based on what you've seen here today. If the town board wanted to go forward to have public hearings. Julie or Rick, I don't know if you want to talk about that and the timing we discussed. Or if you want to hold off. What we had talked about was if the board was comfortable. Was putting a notice of public hearing on the December 22nd Town Board Meeting. And having a public hearing on January 12th, which would be the first Town Board Meeting of next year. We can, again, the board would decide whether you wanted to go forward with that or whether you think we need to perhaps address. I think the, the one that you spoke of supervisor, the one.
Town Point.
Town Point, I think, was the one that seemed to be the most up for discussion. I don't know how we really felt about the others. But again, it's your folks' call whether you'd want to aim to have public hearings on these. We'd have to submit the resolution for the notice of public hearings next week. In order to have the public hearings on January 12th, so.
I'm waiting for the spaceship to land with.
I don't know. I'd prefer over to Jay to see how quick he wants this done. Do we, do we have time to let everybody review it before the end of this month and take it on in January?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I would say, you know.
Look at Russia at this point.
Because there's so many people affected by this and it is winter time. A lot of people who use the beaches might not be around. That's going to be a problem. But I think we should do our best to let everybody know that. You know, what these changes are and how they'll be affected. So yeah, I think January is probably the right timeframe. Not try to rush it through before the end of the year. But I, you know, I'm willing to do the public hearing the way you guys have proposed it. Although I would ask you to take a look at that one thing at Taub Point Road. To see if maybe we can create a little more resident-only parking over there if it works. Because there was a whole stretch that was available that will not be available now. At a, at a beach that gets a lot of use. So. And I don't know if you had any of the, anybody from that community is part of your working group. So. We know they're, they're pretty involved over there.
Questions was whether, you know, how much community interaction have you had? And, you know, I'm, I'm not, it's a lot to take in. I'm not sure that every community. Or what communities are covered. I know that I personally get a lot of concerns from road ends in Flanders. I know we had talked about that early on. It doesn't seem like this was something that, that you guys had had. Or correct me if I'm wrong, if you guys have considered those other issues while you were looking at this. And then I also, you know, just want to make a point that, and, and you caught that well, Tom, that the highway department has. There's some signage issues here. Was anyone from highways part of your, your team? Think we lost Tom.
So Highway was invited to the process and was always busy.
Yeah, we did, we did invite the highway superintendent. He did not participate. In our two or three, four conference calls.
Which, which is scary for the enforcement part of this because there's so much work to be done with proper signage. That, you know, to get it done by spring, they really need to be part of it. And, and.
I, I agree. I mean, I, you know, that's why I was a little surprised by that. So I absolutely agree with you.
And just for the board's education, the superintendent of highways did give us a list of road endings that he wanted further information on ownership. So we're looking at those. So I'll make sure with Tom that none of those ones in question are on this list.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Christine.
And just also on the question of community participation. We had a couple of community members who are interested and, and wanted to be included in the process. I believe there might be some on the Zoom call today listening in. Because there were so many variables and so many different departments included in just trying to figure out which ones we wanted to talk about. To get something moving and get everybody in agreement. We then wanted the public comments at the public hearing time. And I believe that we're certainly open to having more than one public hearing. You know, timeframe dependent. Again, we want to get these up before, knock on wood, the, the, the next wave of people, I hope, don't happen. The way it did last year, but there is a time issue as well. But that's the reason why there were no community members actually in the working group. It was an internal working group.
Okay, thank you, Julie. So I, you know, it's a lot to, to absorb. So I'm sure after looking at it, maybe I could find you guys and. Get some questions answered. But. I mean, there are some questions clearly here.
Like Rick said, there's a lot of road ends. So we, we had to pick and choose those that were the, the worst offenders. Sorry, go ahead, Tommy John.
No, it's okay. Zoom meeting conversations can be challenging. A couple of comments on this and I, I, I understand why we are engaging in this. Because of some crowds that we had at our beach earlier in the pandemic. I also know that at Sunset Avenue, we had significant public input in the people, from the people in the area about the extended. Stay, if you will, of people fishing out on the rocks there. To me, this is, the threshold for me, something like this is, is very high. And so the justification to me is important. I am concerned that we would be putting on regulations to our own town residents. A lot of the, a lot of the spaces that are being proposed would require beach parking permits. And there are many people who don't buy beach parking permits, but.
Couple of questions. It's a couple of questions that she's asking. Jim, you need to be muted. Oops, sorry.
I was interested. I'm concerned that we would be restricting our own beaches to our own residents by doing this. And I'm not saying that, that we shouldn't, but we certainly should do our due diligence. A question I have, a kind of a nuts and bolts thing. We mentioned handicap parking. Would, would lines be required to be put on the roads? What kind of signage would be needed? How many signs would now appear at, at these beach ends? And I am very concerned about the, the precedent that would be set. Everyone on this call is aware of the beach end residents, folks, and I'm sure you're on here. We love you to death. And then the people who live more inland, who like to go down and fish for snappers at those, at those beach ends and, and other places as well. And I, I, I am, I would like to see a participation from our highway superintendent or his designee in this. And like I said, you know, the justification is important to me. My sense is to, is to see another season and to see how things go for another season. This pandemic will end. And, you know, so we will be looking at different, different factors in our community. And I wouldn't want to put on regulations now during a pandemic that we're going to live with forever. So those are my thoughts.
If I may, just jump in with a couple of thoughts about the process. We've drafted these regulations and as I think all of us that worked on the task force know. It took a lot of time to draft these and we can modify them. But if, but the kind of the groundwork has been done to put this in place to go forward. Either now or at some point in the future. We've got the drafts done. Also with regard to the process, you can always have the public hearings, but not adopt. And if you find that you do need to address the problems. You can just bring that resolution up for adoption and save yourself about a month because you've already had your public hearings. As you know, the public hearing has to take place prior to adoption. And between public hearings and adoption, it's at least a month worth of time. So having the regulations drafted has saved a lot of time in the future. And if you decide at some point to have the public hearings, you can always hold off on adoption.
So what do people want to do? You want to go ahead and draft it and schedule a hearing?
Well, I'll chime in first. So we know that residents, and this is kind of to one of Tommy John's points. Residents did come to us because they were concerned about the crowds of people. And that's the reason why this started. I, I would be happy to have a public hearing, if only to hear from our public. And, you know, we can then decide to either go forward or modify or not, not go forward at all. That's my opinion.
We do have a working draft notice of public hearing. And I would suggest, as Councilman Loftstead had, that we leave it open for maybe two or more public hearings. Public, public hearings because of the input, you know, initially.
Rick, what do you want to do here?
Well, I want to take Tommy John's concerns first. We did think about the residents locally. We made sure that we had kept spots open for everybody, whether they be local residents or not. And, but I think the idea that this is just a cause by the pandemic. I don't know if that's true. I mean, it was caused by social media due to the pandemic. That everybody found out beaches and they came out. And I think it could possibly be a recurring issue from year to year. As fishing is great, as crabbing is great, whatever the reason is. You know, the word gets out in a day, come out to Hampton Bays, there's no regulations or come out to Tuckahoe, we have the beach to ourselves. You know, I think Captain Kieran can talk a little more about that, but he saw what we saw that, you know, we were inundated in 24 hours or less. So I think we need some kind of regulation just to, to head it off a little bit. We can modify it to, you know, allow more of the local residents and. Maybe make a little more space for, for non-permit. But I think, I think we should move forward, maybe slowly. But a couple of public hearings would be great. I know we've talked, Julie and I have talked to a lot of the local residents. You know, there were safety issues, sanitation issues. There were a lot of concerns that, you know, they had for this. Some were new residents, some were people who've been here for a long time. So they've seen the changes. But I think it's something we need to address. We can do, we can do it in the new year. I'm okay with that.
John, you want to weigh in here?
Well, I, I, you know, I think everybody is, is right in, in, in different ways. I think, you know, my concern, and I, I think Rick, you and Julie both hit on it, that, you know, you, you could do this two ways. One is you can involve the public prior to drafting the legislation or draft what you think is best and then get public input. I, I think you're going to need a lot of public input and probably get a lot. So I'm, I'm in favor of, you know, hearing back from the public and. But I think it's going to be several public hearings. And, you know, there's, you've got a lot of work ahead of you to respond to that. So I, you know, I'm, I'm more than happy to, to entertain that because I'd really like to hear from different communities. I feel there are a couple of communities that, that I, I would, I was surprised or maybe misunderstood that you hadn't heard from. They, and they will have an opportunity to speak as well. But I, I, I agree that, you know, we have this problem. Where we have the, the, the localized issue of the pandemic and people coming out from the city and our increase in local population. But I, I do agree with Rick that it is a, I, I don't think it's going to go away. And I think we do need to address these things, but it, it's a long haul. But let's, let's get going.
All right. Did we get everybody there? I don't know. It sounds like there's, there is a general consensus toward holding a hearing. I'm not sure if Councilman Sciovanni agrees with holding the hearing yet. I don't know. But we probably should hold the hearing then. I think it should be in January. And, you know, whatever efforts you guys can make to let the community know. I guess they can read about it in the paper, but. You know, I think we shouldn't try to do this in one public hearing. We should do this over the course of several public hearings. Because it is a, you know, significant changes in parking regulations. All right?
Absolutely.
All right. Let's, well, thank you, you know, Tom and Kristin. And Captain Kieran and anyone else who's on for this piece. Let's, let's go back to the agenda. I think the next case is updates, right? So let's, let's just do some updates. We talked about COVID quite a bit. I, I have a little update from AFTI. I, I have a little update from AFTI. All for the East End, the not-for-profit that we helped kickstart has now raised over $1.3 million and granted out over $1 million to food pantries to deal with hunger issues. So that's a really, really significant, I think we gave $150,000. But they continue to raise money and distribute it very significantly to the areas most in need. So people want to donate. They can do that at afti.org, A-F-T-E-E dot org. Let's see. I've had so many Zoom meetings, it's almost a blur at this point. Did have one meeting about dredging by Somas, Old Fort Pond. And they still haven't resolved where to, where the county would put any of the dredge spoils. That's the big question. Had a meeting about the Girl Scout property. I'm trying to get the, the building, the main lodge building fixed up and whether that can be done through CPF as a historic property. And, you know, we don't have an answer yet, but that's something that's being looked at. Had a meeting with the village mayor about the Pyrrhus Concert property and with some of the people from the Southampton African Museum, African American Museum. And they are, we're looking at whether the Pyrrhus Concert House can be put back together using CPF funds as a landmark property that is not landmarked either. And you know, we can, I continue to have all kinds of meetings related to COVID. They go on every single day. And trying to think of any other, you know, meetings that are, are worth mentioning at this work session. Not thinking of anything right now. So anybody else, maybe as we go around, I'll think of some other things. But Rick, do you have anything you want to update us on?
Nothing else right now. I want to thank you for AFTI though. I mean, the, the work that I do with the food pantries, it's incredible. You know, the amount of money that AFTI has given to the food pantries really helped out communities. And I know from the heart of the Hamptons to St. Rosalie's, it's amazing that, that they were able to come up with that kind of money. So it's been wonderful. It's a great, great asset to our community.
You know, one thing I just thought about, I'm working with LIPA a little bit on what I believe is not necessarily an overbilling, but a miscalculation in terms of what is owed on the visual benefits assessment. And I have taken the position that they are, their, their total cost for the project, this is that, you know, earn people's electric bills is based on an interest rate that is above what they actually are paying to have buried those lines. And LIPA does seem to now be taking the position that I'm correct on that. And based on the new calculation, the visual best, visual benefit assessment will now end two years earlier than it would have. So it's about a $2 million overestimation that I'm trying to get corrected. I'm not quite done with this. I'm waiting, I have to talk one more time with LIPA and finalize it. But I, I think that's going to happen. That's why I'm mentioning it now. But it looks positive. It was brought to my attention that the interest rate on the borrowing was being estimated at 6% and that the, when, when I drilled down on it, found that in around, I think, I can't remember the year right now, but they did refinance the bond at a lower interest rate. So it, it does make a significant difference. They hadn't adjusted it though in their estimate of the cost of the project. All right, any, any, I'll keep you updated if we, if I get that finalized. But that, that'll be relief to the payers, including the town of Southampton. Because it's on our utility bills too, because Southampton Town Hall is in the VBA. All right, any other updates? Let's go, Julia.
Sure. Tuesday evening, I attended a Zoom North CCAC meeting and I just wanted to let the board know that there are two projects in their area that they're extremely concerned about. One is the 120 condo project at the Saheki property. And the other one is the Strong's Marina property. So just to let you know that they, they do have concerns. They're having other meetings within their community to discuss both those projects. So just wanted to let you, you know, give you an update that they are concerned about those two projects.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
And just to kind of extend what Councilwoman Lofted said, that the planning board will be having a, a public meeting on the Saheki property on December 15th.
Thank you, Tommy John.
I mean, I'll make the board aware that that provision in the code that allows the zoning board to change the use of a property from one non-conforming use to another is, is something that has troubled me for a long time because it appears to me to be a rezoning, which is typically in the purview of the town board. And I am looking to introduce some code amendments that will actually transfer that to the town board. And I'll be asking the board to consider whether that provision ought to be with the town board, not, you know, an elected body and not with an appointed body because it really constitutes a zone change in my mind. So, but we don't have to discuss it in detail now, but I wanted to make you aware. And there are a couple proper, there are a couple proposals right now that are before the zoning board. The Dockers Proposal and the Saheki Proposal that are both using this unusual provision in the code to allow for a use contemplated, that's not contemplated under zoning, that is different than the grandfathered use.
It is an interesting provision. I haven't seen it in other zoning codes in other municipalities that have been involved in. So it's, it is unique, I would say that.
Well, typically with a zone change, a zone change would allow a use not contemplated under zoning. It would change the zoning, but it goes through the, go through the town board and it would go through South County Planning Commission and potentially a super majority if the planning commission were against it. These, these zone changes don't seem to go through any of that. It's just if the zoning board feels that the new use is better than the old use, even if it's not in the zoning code. So if a junkyard wanted to become a shopping mall, don't get any ideas, you junkyard owners. But technically, the zoning board under this provision could allow that if they felt that the shopping mall was better than the junkyard. And there's no standards even for what determines better.
It's very broad, you know, one use is right. One, one use is more beneficial to the community, something, something along those language.
Right. So, you know, the, the fact that it's outside of zoning makes it feel a little bit like a PDD in a way, which we have taken a serious look at already as a town board and decided to eliminate that section. I think there's some use to the ability to go from one non-conforming use to a lesser adverse non-conforming use rather than just completely fading a non-conforming use out into a conforming use. But I just think it belongs in front of the town board. That determination. Other than that, non-conforming uses sort of, eventually the idea is that they go away. They're grandfathered, but once they're abandoned, then they be, they become conforming uses. So if the conforming, a non-conforming use is no longer viable, the idea is you, you make it a conforming use. And if you can't find a conforming use, then you could potentially ask for use variance from the zoning board. But this, this, this is an unusual, unusual, unusual code provision that I think we need to take a serious, hard look at and decide if it's going to stay, what, you know, should it be with an elected body or with an appointed body?
Typically, like you said, Mr. Supervisor, in situations like this, people would go for a change of zone application. That's the typical way that if it was going to be such a dramatic change in, in in the use of the subject property, that we'd go for a change of zone, which then would make that, if, if granted, would make that a conforming use in that zoning category. So you would, you would eliminate this continuation of these non-conforming uses.
But this actually allows you to go to a use that's not even in a zone. So if you wanted to, let's say, turn a junkyard, I'll use that example as a non-conforming use into a theme park or ATV park or whatever it is. You could pick something that is not allowed in any zone and suddenly allow it if a group of individuals said, feels that that's a better, better use than what's currently there. So it, it is, it is a strange provision and it's an awful lot of power to give to an unelected body. And that's why I'm going to ask the town board to look at this carefully. I'm working on something and I expect to introduce it relatively soon. Very soon. And you guys can see what you think about it. And hopefully we'll have a public hearing on it and we'll, we'll have the public to weigh in on it as well. All right. Any other updates?
Well, just quickly, I, I know we have executive session in a few minutes. I just wanted to thank Ryan Murphy. He attended the CAC West on our last meeting and it was a very fruitful meeting. And I keep thinking about Ryan, you know, having joined us when we hired him to, to be here. And all you've been dealing with is the pandemic. But, you know, and you, you make time to go around and go to different CACs and be, be present. So I just wanted to thank you for that. It was actually a very informative meeting and the public walked away. The members walked away really actually quite, quite pleased with what they learned from you. So thank you for that. Also, just quickly, I, I sit on the CAC Task Force for the county. That's led by legislator Fleming. That document is now, we've completed the draft, it's going in front of the legislature. Within a week or so, I'm really pleased to, to see that happen. We continue to work with local municipalities that have acted CCA legislation from Hempstead to Brookhaven to you know, a, a lot of municipalities are, are beginning to enact enabling up legislation for that. We continue to work with Assemblyman Deals Office in helping us overcome some of the regulatory hurdles that, that we, we encounter as we move forward. But I'm feeling very positive about the outcome of CCA at this time. And for your note, other committee I sit on is the Southern County Agriculture Lease Program, the 10-year lease. That document is also complete and will be up for, in front of the legislature also this week. So I'm, I'm, I'm going to find myself out of, out of a job at two committees in the next week. So, but it's good work and, and well worth reviewing. And particularly for you, Julie, I think the, the, the lease program was developed in conjunction, in conjunction with a lot of input, a lot of stakeholders. And it was a long tedious process, but at the end of it, I think it serves the people well. So particularly fishing industry and the issues that, you know, that they brought up as well. Anyway, I have more to say, but I'll, I'll leave it there and see you guys in exec.
All right, Tommy John, you have anything?
Yeah, this week we had fire district elections in the town of Southampton. I just want to take the opportunity to let people know that we have elections every year and for a variety of different reasons. This week we had fire district elections. Fire commissioners are in fact the elected legislature of the fire district. It's an incredibly important position. And most of the time, these races are non-contested, but in Eastport, we, we had a contested race. I want to congratulate Ed Schneider as becoming a fire commissioner. That's a, that's, it's going to be a great addition over there. And also in Bridgehampton, there were contested races as well. And Elizabeth Willen-Cotes was elected as fire commissioner, the first female fire commissioner in that district. So good luck to her. And Peter Grine was, was also elected as well. So we're doing important work with our fire districts and it's important to, to coordinate and, and, and work together at these things. And I'd want to give a shout out again to Ryan, who is also working with our fire district in addition to all of the other things that he does. And incidentally, Ryan was also reelected as commissioner in Hatchahuck. So well done there.
All right, thank you, Councilmen. All right, any other updates from any of the town board members or anyone? All right. So we do have a couple executive session items. Not too much. We have obviously, I think land acquisition. I think, or no?
No, not, not today.
Not today, all right.
We may have, we may have, we may have one thing to speak about, a non-leased land acquisition.
And then we have litigation updates and I don't think we have personnel even. We might have one contract related piece, so. Let me, yeah, so why don't we, we can talk about contracts as well. All right, so let me make a motion to end our work session and go into executive session. We'll do that through a separate secure phone call. And everybody I think has been provided that information who's supposed to be in that, on that phone call. So I'll make a motion to adjourn for all other purposes.
Second.
Second by Councilman Skivoni, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you all.